Bonas en hafide, the Committee of the Whole is back from recess. We are still on Bill Number 246-36COR as amended, an act to approve the Hagonia restoration and redevelopment plan and its supporting documents. We last left off on Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes.
Madam Chair, if I may, if you could just, if I may, Madam Chair, I do have another proffered amendment that I'm hoping my colleagues could look at. So if, and it's being worked on right now, so if you can come back to me, I'd appreciate it. Thanks. I know I still have some time. The amendment that was, that didn't make it on the earlier motion, Madam Chair, and based on what I've been working with, I want to proffer another amendment. So I'm hoping that you can come back to me at the end.
All right. Thank you very much, Vice Speaker. We will come back to you later when that amendment is submitted. I know that you had a supporting document to append to the committee report. Would you like to do that now?
Yeah, Madam Chair, also that we did receive a project development process that was delivered to the committee, and I'd like to just append it to the committee report.
Thank you. Hearing no objections. Yes, Senator Blaz.
Thank you, and I appreciate this, but what is this?
Sure. I think, Vice, can you please explain what document we're looking at?
Madam Chair, if I may, this was a documentation that was sent, that was given to each of our colleagues during yesterday's session in the Committee of the Whole, and I just wanted to make sure that it got appended to the committee report.
Yes.
In reference to Army Corps process.
Thank you very much. Any objections to adding it to the committee report? Senator Blaz.
I appreciate that we want to be able to append this and add this to the committee report. However, it does not speak to what this is for. How does this relate to, I guess the question is how does it relate to the three components that we're trying to, that this legislation is trying to approve?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Vice Speaker, you yield the question.
In yesterday's discussion, there was an inquiry in reference to a process, and there was, they asked for documentation for that. We can have the clerk go back if, to review what actual section. I'm not, I don't know what time yesterday, but it was an inquiry that was asked, and it was submitted by AHRAM. Just, we don't have to submit it if they don't want, Madam Chair, but the motion's on the floor.
Okay.
It was a request from one of my colleagues yesterday.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker. Senator Blaz, Senator San Agustin, on the motion.
Madam Chair, I think the motion is just to add it on. It has nothing to do with the amendment that was proffered.
No, it doesn't. This is a separate.
I think that needs to be cleared.
This is a separate motion to append this to the committee report.
Okay, just added information. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. On the motion to add the document to the committee report. Hearing no objections. Motion passes. Okay, the next amendment we have in the drive is from Senator Perez, and it can be found as A. Bill Number 246-P8-6. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this amendment that you referred to is on page one to two. And it's an amendment to read, or it's added to Section 1.3, Agencies Influencing Planning in Hagonia. And the part that's being added, if you look on the second page of the amendment, it states, "Commissione fino chamaro zen i fina, finanaguen i historia zen i lata tautautano." "The Commission on Chamaro Language and the Teaching of the History and Culture of the Indigenous People of Guam was established through the Chamaro Heritage Commission Act of 2016. The Commission leads our island's nation-building efforts to ensure the continuity of our Chamaro peoplehood and nationhood by fostering the restoration and revitalization of our language, culture, and history as Guahan's tautautano. The use of historical place names and the street names will be approved formally by the Commissione fino chamaro zen i finanaguen i historia zen i lata tautautano in keeping with its legal responsibilities and mandates, and to allow legal to renumber and make technical corrections." So this amendment is being proffered in response to a memo that was sent by former Senator Hope Kristobal regarding concerns of the naming and the signage to be aligned with their orthography as developed by the Commissione, and I ask for my colleagues' support on this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the amendment, Senator Blaz, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I don't know if this amendment is proper in that, first off, this body, while it has the master plan or it has the document to be referred to, the master plan hasn't actually been attached to. So that's not, it's still not a property of the body. Secondly, the question that I have here is that, is this in reference to it specifically to any of the three components that we're going to be, going to be, that we plan to address in this? You know, again, it goes back to the concern that I had raised earlier in whether or not the approval of the first document that we're trying to approve here, in its approval, does that by default approve the other facets or the other plans or the other components that have not yet received approval from this body or is not intended to be approved by this body until more information is on? So I guess my first concern is whether or not, and maybe legal can look at this, is because the amendment has not passed, the amendment that would have attached this plan to the bill to now be a part of the bill failed. So how do we approve a plan? You know, I recognize, not to go against what she wants to do, but do we have the authority, and can we do that at this point in time? I think that, you know, it's the cart before the horse here. Okay, so, you know, I really don't mean to raise an objection to this. It's just that I don't know whether it's proper and it's, you know, whether or not we can. Because the plan isn't attached to the bill. Okay? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blaz. A point of information, Vice Speaker.
Madam Chair, in light of the previous question, I'd like that we, again, go into a moment's recess so we can consult with legal to see how we can further move on this legislation at this time. So please, a moment's recess.
We are in recess.
The Committee of the Whole is back from recess. Vice Speaker Tina Muny-Barnes here, recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me the opportunity. Madam Chair, I do have an amendment to proffer, and it was, it's uploaded. It's under A B two four six L one P one. And what it will specifically read is line one, page one. To amend the bill to read an act to conditionally approve the Hagonia Restoration and Redevelopment Plan and its supporting documents. Being enacted by the people of Guam, section one, the Hagonia Restoration and Redevelopment Plan developed in accordance with the provisions of twenty-one G C A, section seven nine three oh two, is conditionally approved. The following documents are conditionally approved. A, the master plan, in parentheses, land use. B, design guidelines and regulations. And C, the map atlas. Section two, the Hagonia Restoration and Redevelopment developed in accord, plan developed in accordance with the provisions of section, of twenty-one G C A, section seven nine three oh two, is deemed conditionally approved until the following components of the plan receive further approval by the governor and the Guam Legislature consistent with twenty-one G C A, section seven nine three oh four. A, the Hagonia River Flood Protection Plan. B, the Hagonia zoning code. And C, the Hagonia Governance Plan. Any and all references to the approved plan shall only mean the components approved in section one of this act until and after the components mentioned in section two receive further approval by the governor and the Guam Legislature consistent with twenty-one G C A, section seven nine three oh four. And then number three is the severability clause. Madam Chair. If any and all, if any provisions of this act or its application to any person of circumstances is found to be invalid or contrary to the law, such invalidities shall not affect the other provisions or application of this act and can be given effect without the invalid provisions and application. And to this end, the provisions of this act are severable. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
I hope this helps.
On the amendment.
Madam Chair, I don't think we, all the members have a copy of the amendment yet.
We'll take a moment. We ask that all the copies be passed out to the senators. The Committee of the Whole is back from recess. The copy of the amendment has been passed out. On the amendment. Senator Titegwe, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when I look at this amendment, and it's taking into account A, B, and C, which is the master plan, design guidelines, regulations, and map atlas. And then if you turn it around, the second section says that it has to be approved, approved into the following components of the plans received. approved into the following components of the plans received, approval by the Governor and the Guam Legislature in '21. But then, then you have Hagatna River Protection Plan, and then you have the zoning code, and you have the governance plan. Well, these are components that are part of Attachment A, that's in Attachment A. There's eight of them. It seems some of these components are missing. I'm not sure why they're missing. From this, if we're going to address all the components, because it does say here that any and all reference to the approved plan shall mean, only mean, the components approved in Section 1 of this act until after the components. So we're talking about the components. And I think we're short some components, if we're talking about them, because there's eight. However, there is one in Section C, I mean, on the second page of the, or Section 2, letter C, it says Hagatna Governance Plan. So I looked through the eight components that are in this plan, and I don't see Hagatna Governance Plan in the components. And maybe I have a question, make that a question to the author of the amendment?
Thank you.
To try and guide me where this is in the component area.
Vice Speaker Tina Minier-Barnes, do you yield to the question?
Chapter 8, 8-2, Madam Chair, under governance.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The governance, Chapter 8, Page 8-2, under governance.
However, all the components are on Page 1-1 and 1-2. So are there other components that throughout this plan that's not mentioned in the eight that was submitted on Page 1-1, 1-2? Maybe there's more than eight? And is the Hagatna Governance Plan a, you know, a component? So, you know, this is, it doesn't make sense, because you're also leaving out one of the other components, and that is the implementation as well as the, let no, organizational financial slash financial. That's also out. So, you know, there's several things. So, you know, I'm going to have to object, this is, this amendment. Madam Speaker, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tiedegui. There's been an objection. Anyone else on the amendment? Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just trying to understand my colleague, when she identifies on Page 1 of the Hagatna Master Plan, those are chapters? Okay, that's one. And if you look at it, what this, I support the amendment. Let's start with that, okay? When it talks about the land use, there's a combination of both Chapter 3 and Chapter 4. I would assume that. I'm just guessing with that. Design guidelines, there's... I'm trying to understand where we're talking about components that are missing. Is the clock running, or the clock doesn't run right? Go ahead and continue, okay. So I don't, because when we talk about finance, I do have an amendment when it deals with financials, so I'm just going to leave it at that. I'm not going to debate this. I support the amendment. Thank you.
Point of information?
Thank you very much. Say your point of information, Senator Tiedegui.
Thank you. Point of information, Page 1-1, it states, "By me for ease of reference and implementation, the master plan update is broken into the following eight components." So that's where I'm getting that from. It's not a chapter. It talks about the components itself. It's on 1-1.
Thank you for your point of information. On the amendment, on the amendment, there's been an objection. All those in favor of the amendment, Speaker Terlachy?
I support the amendment. The amendment is a combination of several other amendments that were passed out this morning, that would lay out specifically the three attachments that we have received and conditionally approved those, and then lay out some attachments that we haven't received. If there's other attachments that are being anticipated, those could be added, but I think this list came from me. This is the list that I was concerned about. The flood protection plan, how it was abruptly removed from all discussion on this HRA master plan. And, you know, we were given the reason that's because the Army Corps mandate was all of a sudden different from what we wanted. And I would like to know the specifics of that. What specifically was the Army Corps going to give us that was not what they wanted? What is it that they want, that they are proposing to contract with Matrix again, to get? What exactly? Especially if we've already built an entire master plan without any flood mitigation? Or is there flood mitigation in here, regardless of any feasibility study by the Army Corps or anyone? Those are, I mean, I've asked those questions at the hearing, and then again yesterday. And, of course, they answered, but it's, I hate to say, just still not clear. And so we all recognize the amount of work that was done on this gigantic proposal. It's bigger than what we have in front of us. The 200 and some pages is only a fraction of the work that they actually funneled through Matrix, right? Just a fraction. So there are so many other components that may, that they, they will move on if the bill is passed in its original form. If the bill's passed in its original form, the HRA gets, gets the approval of the plan required by statute, and gets to, to pretty much move forward with rezoning Hagatna, move forward with establishing a governance for Hagatna, as they proposed in their master They will move forward with which mitigation they decide is suitable for Hagatna, which ones are not. And that's really why I'm interested in this flood mitigation plan. I want to make sure that, you know, whose decision is it, which properties will be mitigated from flooding, and which ones will not? And I know we can't probably mitigate everyone's, but I think we should be very clear about it. And that's what I've asked. That's what I want. I want it to be clear on the record, when the legislature passes this authority and delegates it away from us, that we have no other opportunity as a legislature for oversight, no other opportunity for public hearings, no other opportunity to lay it out and inform those landowners that the property next to you might be flood mitigated, yours will not, or none of yours will. I don't know. That's what I can't understand. It's like, if there was a flood mitigation plan that is required, well, isn't that because we want to mitigate some flooding? We want to, this plan calls for the establishment of a boardwalk along the river. I cannot imagine that being done without shoring up the river. I think this plan is where I saw that they're calling for hardening the shoreline. I'm not exactly sure what that all means. I couldn't read all of this again. I've read it, I think, before, but I couldn't read it all again. I've tried. But I want that to be clear. When you, when you harden the coastline, what does that mean for the properties adjacent to that? That's all I want to know. And I want it to be very clear to those who might be impacted. And it didn't seem to me like they were moving on any of these gigantic projects right away. So I thought that the legislature could take a little more time and, you know, vet this a little further, get all the detailed answers to the questions, so that we can feel comfortable moving on. And that if we are going to let go of any authority, any oversight over any other actions in Hagatna, including construction of any other buildings after passage of this bill, the zoning on those buildings, any, the activities, the parking, whether they're going to charge us for parking down here or not, all of it would become under their jurisdiction. And I don't know about the rest of you, but for me, that's all. I just feel like if I am saying yes to that, I want to be able to tell the people why. This is another thing. You know, we have time limits in the public hearings, we have time limits on our Committee of the Whole. This is a 200-page document. We are just, I feel restricted in the way we are handling this, and that handling it with a little bit more vetting is going to be a win-win for everyone. We all want to see the millions of dollars that are being, going to be spent, or the million dollars that was spent on this plan come into fruition. We don't want it to be wasted. And so I just think, on the amendment, that, I, yeah, I like the three that are laid out. If there's more, lay them out. Otherwise, for sure, I want that the zoning code be laid out in front of the legislature. I want that the governance plan be laid out in front of the legislature, and the flood protection plan, because of the reasons that I stated earlier. So I would support this amendment. But in, overall, I actually support that the entire plan be, that we be allowed additional time to vet it.
Thank you, Speaker. On the amendment, on the amendment, there's been an objection. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Senator Blaz, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'd like to be able to support an amendment, and maybe there's some wordcrafting that's necessary, so that it is more specific in as to what is approved and what has not been approved by this plan. You know, the concern that was brought up, you know, by my colleague earlier, and as far as the eight points, I appreciate the caveat placed by this, by this amendment on how the plans will be, you know, will be approved. However, my concern, and I apologize, but I can see based on the discussions from my colleagues, maybe the necessity to spell out what part of this plan is approved and what is not, based on the language contained in the master plan. The master plan has eight components. Which of those eight components are being approved and which are not, conditionally approved and which are not? So I think that it's a necessity. It will help to, to be, you know, and as far as being specific to this, I have to agree that in, in form, I like the amendment, for what it would stand for. But I think that more specificity is necessary, so that we can truly understand what will be approved, conditionally approved, and what is not approved. And that's, and this is in the bill. We're not talking about changing the language found in the, in the document, the attached document. So I would, before you take a vote on that, Madam Chair, I think it's only fair for both sides to understand that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Blaz. On the amendment, there's been an objection to the amendment. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Amendment fails. Vice Speaker, you are still recognized. Thank you very much. Onto the next amendment. Senator Parris, you are recognized.
Ms. Mossy, Madam Chair. So there are, I believe, two amendments that have been adjusted. Let me see if I can find the first one. Yeah, I believe if we can get some copies handed out, so moments recess. Please read out the amendment number. It's the amendment on Page 1 to 2. The updated amendment is still being printed out, I think, though.
Okay, we'll take a moment for everyone to receive their copy. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So one of the amendments I'd like to proffer is on line eight, page one. It's to add a new section three to the bill to read, "The Hagadne Master Plan, Land Use Plan shall include Policy Gov. Governance 10.9 and Chapter Eight under Goal Governance -10." It'll read, "Policy Governance Gov.-10.9. HRA shall reevaluate the plan every five years or sooner if new and emerging information has been produced that poses significant impacts as determined by the Bureau of Statistics and Plans with the regulatory network." To the approved master plan, HRA shall report annually to E. Les Latour in Guam of the status of the master plan. And so this amendment was, is being proffered with the, I guess, concern about climate change impacts to the shoreline and of Hagadne, and that, you know, with the changing shoreline, it could impact the development of Hagadne itself. And as such, it would probably trigger a response to it. So I, this is one of the reasons for this amendment. Of course, potentially, there might be other conditions that might change that are not foreseen at this point in time as well. And so it's important that the Bureau of Statistics and Plans be the one to be the head of this because they are the planning agency of the government, and they, as well, they coordinate a lot of the regulatory networks in requiring or consulting with them, which is, which is key. So this is the amendment I'd like to proffer.
Thank you. On the amendment, on the amendment. Hearing no objections. Speaker Trelawney, you are recognized.
I support this amendment. They said they were going to be reviewing their plan regularly. BSP, Bureau of Statistics and Plans, said that they are going to, that it had to be flexible enough for them to also change. My only issue with this is, this plan cost us a million dollars, and I do not want to be authorizing here a reevaluation that's going to cost us another million dollars or anything like that. So I'm hoping this can be done without that cost, and I just want to put that on the record. I don't know how to secure that, but, you know, this is the type of thing that they're going to have authority over taxes on all improvements going forward in the city of Hagadne. They get those taxes, they use it how they want, and I don't want this to be how they have to use it. I'm hoping a reevaluation can happen. I don't know if that can happen within the agencies of the government, or if we're going to have to contract that out again, you know, or what exactly that entails. I'm not that familiar, but that's my only concern. I don't want to be forcing them to spend another million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. On the amendment, on the amendment, hearing no objections, amendment passes. Again, we are going in the order in which the amendments were submitted. Senator Perez, your next amendment.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So the next amendment that I'm proffering is on line one, page two. It's to add a new section four of the bill to read, section four, page three dash two of the Hagadne Master Plan, Land Use Plan. Under 3.2 Goals and Policies, shall be amended as follows. 3.2 Goals and Policies, land use forms the underlying basis for all community functions. It concerns the productivity of land as well as the overall benefits drawn from it. Therefore, ensuring that uses are compatible with nearby existing and future land uses is important. Land use goals and policies envision opportunities to revive Hagadne as a capital city and Guam's core destination. They establish the importance of developing dense urban structures which support a variety of uses, creating live work-play environments. The Hagadne Master Plan shall comply with zoning laws pursuant to 21 GCA, Chapter 61, prior to the development of zoning policies and procedures by the HRA Board. And so this came up with the Committee of the Whole, and the question that I asked is, will HRA honor currently what's in statute? And the response that I received initially was yes. And I think it's important that before any kind of policies and procedures are developed different from what we have, it's important to have what we have currently in effect. And so this puts it in writing.
Thank you. On the amendment. Anyone on the amendment? Speaker Trelawney, you are recognized.
Thank you. I, I guess I concur with the intent of this amendment, which is to say that before any other zoning policies are passed, they are going to comply with the current zones. I think this amendment, however, reemphasizes that they don't need our authority at this point. If this bill passes the way it looks, without any of the amendments that we tried to put on earlier, they would not need any further authority by the legislature to rezone. They've already laid out a plan for rezoning that was submitted to, I don't know if it was prior legislatures, I think it was, and, but the statute that we are dealing under says they have complete authority over zoning. It only requires a public hearing, a single public hearing, before they rezone. And so they have a plan to do that. And, you know, right now, if you're going to rezone property anywhere else in the government of Guam, you have to give notice to the adjacent landowners. And I guess that's my concern, is that their authority really allows them to blanket rezone the entire city in one fell swoop, which is kind of what the plan that they submitted to some prior legislature shows. But that plan is not before us today. And I just don't... I don't know if this amendment, in trying to reiterate that they fire, that they follow the current zoning prior to development of zoning policies and procedures, I guess I don't want to reiterate that authority to develop zoning policies and procedures at the board level alone. I hope that makes sense. So what I'm saying is, I think it's incumbent on us to at least require a zoning plan that they are proposing to, to come through the legislature because it allows for an additional... through the legislature because it allows for an additional view, it endows for additional public input. And that's all. I mean, otherwise, that they comply with existing zoning, I think they have to do that. But there's nothing either to prevent them from passing as this hints at zoning policies and procedures on a, on a piece-by-piece level. I don't know. Obviously, it's, it's the zoning that's really a concern for me. So, I have no problem with the goal of the, this goal. But I, this sentence, I guess. I don't know. No, never mind. I have, I don't have an objection to this sentence. It says they're going to, I guess I'm trying to figure out why they would think they can apply any other zone except for the existing zone currently. I don't, I mean, are we afraid of that? Did they say they were going to do that? That's all. But, yeah, otherwise. This is the hard part, is that we don't know exactly. So, but I'm not going to object to this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the amendment, the Perez amendment. Hearing no objections. You want to close? Okay. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, just by reading the amendment again, the master plan shall comply with zoning laws pursuant to 21 GC Chapter 61 prior to development of zoning policies and procedures by HRA Board. After, you know, in line with the concerns brought in by the previous speaker, I guess my concern is even deeper in that it just says prior to the development of zoning policies and procedures. I'm afraid that that language basically just says, once they come up with a zoning policy and procedure despite any approval mechanism, it's going to happen. In itself, without any amendment to, to the language, I'm going to have to object to this. But if the, prior to the development and approval, and the necessary approvals by the governor and the legislature. I'm just concerned that this leaves it open-ended. Unless there's an amendment to this amendment, I'm going to have to object to it.
Thank you, Senator Blas. On the amendment, there's been an objection. All those in favor to close, Senator Perez.
Yeah, Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I would like to actually make an amendment to this. Hearing the concerns from the previous speakers, I, I think it's important that the zoning plan or policies be brought to the legislature for approval. So, because I know the enabling statute gives a lot of powers to the HRA Board, which includes zoning. And I just think the more transparency regarding this, I think, you know, I would like to promote that. Perhaps, though, I think what's more important is maybe revisiting the enabling statute. I think there's a lot of concerns from that in itself that's, it's filtered into this plan. But this bill is before us. And so, I'd like to make that, maybe take a moment recess to add that in, make an amendment to this amendment.
A moment's recess.
The Committee of the Hole is back from recess. Senator Pairs, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to withdraw my previous amendment on the zoning.
On the motion to withdraw, are there any objections? Hearing none, amendment is withdrawn. Senator Pairs, you are still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I moved to place, I moved to make an amendment on line one, page two, to add a new section four of the bill to read. Section four, page three dash two of the Hagatnia Master Plan, land use plan, under three point two goals and policies, shall be amended as follows. And so it's in section three point two goals and policies, the part that's being amended would state, "Notwithstanding any law, rule, or regulation, the Hagatnia Master Plan shall comply with the current Guam zoning laws prior to the HRA's development and adoption of zoning policies and regulations. Such adopted zoning policies and regulations shall be subject to approval, modification, amendment, or rejection by E. Les Letourne Guahan." And so it's very similar to the amendment that I proffered earlier. My concern was the zoning laws should, they should comply with the current zoning laws, and should there be a change. So at the, this amendment was created because of the reservations that were stated earlier that, you know, these zoning, these new zoning laws should come before the legislature for approval or rejection or modification.
Thank you very much, Senator Pairs. On the amendment, on the amendment, Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you. Just for a technical, is that, you know, I noticed here it says section four. Just for the clerk to recognize that this may not be, this probably will only be section two. Okay? So where it's going to be placed, I know it's going to be placed before the severability clause. We just got to make sure. We just got to make sure that based on what the bill, what we have before us right now, there's only two sections of the bill.
Point of information I do have on the amendment also, legal to renumber, make technical corrections?
Yeah, so just to make sure of that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No objection to the law.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, hearing no objections. Senator Tiede, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for the author of the amendment, if she should yield.
Please state your question.
Thank you. Does this mean that, okay, this does nothing to the current law, the current legis, not legislation, but what governs the Hagatnia restoration? It doesn't apply to that. It only applies to projects coming from the master plan on rezoning.
Do you yield to the question, Senator Perez?
Sorry, can the question be restated?
Okay, sure. Enabling legislation currently right now allows the Hagatnia restoration to zone and even condemned property too as well. This amendment that you're making is, is this amendment strictly for the master plan on any projects that are in the plan itself? And it's still, in other words, it's still, the Hagatnia restoration still has the authority to zone right now in their enabling legislation, given that? So I was just wondering if this affects the current enabling legislation for Hagatnia restoration?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think it doesn't change the enabling statute. It basically applies to how the Hagatnia master plan is going to be implemented and that the zoning policies must be very clear and approved by the legislature before moving forward with change in zoning regulations.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Tiede. On the amendment, hearing no objections, amendment passes. Senator Perez, you are still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have another amendment. It's being passed out, I think, or copied at this moment, so maybe a moment's recess.
Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next amendment is line, page two of the bill, and it adds a new section of the bill to read. So what this amendment does is basically adds more agencies to be a part of the group that influences the plan. And so this came out from the testimony provided by Director Borja, who stated that when this master plan was being developed, Department of Land Management actually consolidated the land agencies, Tomorrowland Trust lands, Guam ancestral lands, and so he added other agencies that should also be part of this, as part of the stakeholders. So this amendment would add into the section 1.3, Agencies Influencing Planning in Hagatnia. And the agencies are Tomorrowland Trust Commission, Guam ancestral lands commission. I've added E. Commission, E. Finno Tomorrow, Zan E. Finna Nagwen, E. Historia, Zan E. Lennalata, E. Tatatano, and then the Guam Land Use Commission and the Guam C. Sharp Protection Commission. And really just reflects the changes in the agencies.
Thank you, Senator Perez.
Yes, so the pages one to three, and I'm adding several agencies to the list that, as separate agencies, because they were once housed under one agency of the Department of Land Management.
On the amendment, hearing no objections. On the amendment, amendment passes. Senator Perez.
No further amendments at this time.
Thank you. Move on to the next amendment. Speaker Turlohi, you are recognized. Speaker Turlohi, you are recognized.
Yeah, well, obviously, my amendment that I was going to propose was put into another amendment and it failed, so I don't want to waste time proposing that, but I do want to speak on the bill with my last five minutes. Again, I want to commend HRA over all these years. There's been different board members, different, you know, staff, and for all the work that they've done, it is a good idea, of course, to have a master plan for Hagatnia and the projects that they have proposed and a lot of the plan is beautiful. It's really something that will make our capital city beautiful. The goal of it, of course, was to make sure that we can have affordable housing in Hagatnia, to make sure that we are going to attract traffic and yet, you know, by having government agencies down here, and yet, at the same time, do everything within zoning and other measures to protect from the adverse effects of traffic and no parking and, you know, flooding and other infrastructure issues that plague Hagatnia at this point. And so right now, the legislature's under the gun pretty much. We have only three choices available to us by statute. Once that plan was submitted to us, we had to either approve it, or amend it, or reject it within a period of days, and after this session, that time expires. That means if we do not act on the bill, the plan is approved by default. So I would just like to propose for everybody's consideration, it's my understanding, especially based on discussions with GIGO, that if we do not accept the plan, in other words, we reject it temporarily, we reject it, it still does not preclude us from continuing to consider the plan and to vet it. And it's available and bill in front of the legislature, and we can reconsider our actions, you know, maybe in 30 days, maybe in 60 days, but it removes that time pressure. And it sounded to me like most of the projects that they have planned for Hagatnia are on government property, and there's nothing in this plan that enhances those projects. There's nothing in our actions by approving or not approving the plan that prevents them from building the land building, the land resource building, that prevents them from building that government agency building that we're all looking forward to, and that they are able to proceed with those, to proceed with the activities that they talked about in Hagatnia, including the Serena Festival, things like that, and that those are not inhibited by our actions, and so those, they can move forward on. And that we just are able to take additional time, for example, to find out, again, the details about that flooding mitigation, what their goal is in getting a different consultant other than the Army Corps. The plans that they have for federal funding, they said they need a plan in order to get federal funding, but we have no details in front of us from what agency are they applying for these federal fundings. On the record, I don't remember any particular one that was mentioned, and I think I asked at the public hearing if they could send those to us, but we did not get those details. But I was told on the phone today by somebody else, they mentioned USDA, they mentioned that the HRA, and this was not an HRA member, might be pursuing a historic preservation grant. I'd like to see what they mean by that and what parts of this plan, or is it the entire plan that's really required to get a historic preservation grant? And is that grant only for one project in Hagatnia and we need to pass an entire plan? That's what I mean, because almost always, you need a plan for an area, but a plan for a city to be a contingency of moving forward on one project? You know, I'm trying to figure that out. But of course, I think I did receive a text today also about HUD being a potential source of funding. Again, I'm asking that those things be put on the record, that we just continue to vet that, what their plans are as to which projects are moving forward, which projects really require an entire plan to be approved versus, you know, oh, sorry, which, my own time is up. Yeah, anyways, but that's the point. It's, I would like to additionally vet with the additional details provided by HRA and to, you know, of course, approve the parts of the plan that we are all, we have no problem with. I'm afraid that with the failure of those other amendments, I don't want to go forward because it would be giving HRA the authority to go forward with their zoning changes, to go forward with governance plan without any further legislative oversight, and I think that's the key. I just, I would feel more comfortable with additional legislative oversight, and I think we can take that additional 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Speaker. On the bill, this is the last round for a comment or an amendment.
Point of information.
Please state your point of information, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, section 79, 304 of chapter 21 GCA, or 21 GCA, chapter 79. If you allow me, I can read this so that it can allay some of the fears that we may have in as far as our timeline. "The authority shall submit the plan to the governor who, if who approves the same, shall submit the plan to the Guam legislature in the form of a bill for adoption amendment, modification, or rejection by the Guam legislature. Such plan shall not be effective until either approved by statute or it will have complied with the provisions of this law, and forty-five calendar days have elapsed from the date received by the Guam legislature of its transmittal, and two legislative days have elapsed after the lapse of the forty-five calendar days." So after the forty-five calendar days, we have two legislative days. Okay? The legislative, so there is time to be able to continue to work and fix this.
Point of information, I believe.
Please state your point of information.
That's been calculated by our council, and we are at our two legislative days. This is the second, this session.
This session.
So when it ends, the second legislative day is over.
But when do the forty-five days expire?
It's past, I'm not sure when.
When?
Take a moment to speak to GIGO if you like.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. On the bill.
Senator Shetan, there is one more amendment, and our colleague is not here.
So would you like to make the proffered amendment?
Huh? No, should we move to recess till tomorrow at 10 o'clock?
There's been a motion to recess till...
What? He's not here. Madam Chair, there was an amendment as proffered by the good senator from GIGO, Senator Sinagastin, which is on page one, line eight, which is to add a new section to section two to the bill to read, financing of Hagatnia restoration and redevelopment projects. Notwithstanding any other provisions of Guam law, rules, or regulation, the governor of Guam may use federal funds that are made available to the government of Guam by the United States federal government for the financing, design, construction, and maintenance of Hagatnia restoration and redevelopment projects. The use of other financing options is authorized for the purpose of this act, including but not limited to loans, grants, bonds, financing, and other alternative funding options, subject to the approval by the legislature. So again, the opportunity to make, if there's any grants out there, that the administration can apply for, and it not being limited to, on the condition that it's subject to the approval of the legislature. So that is the amendment as proffered by the good senator from GIGO, who's the Oversight Chair of Finance and Budget.
Thank you very much, Senator, Vice Speaker. On the amendment, on the amendment, hearing no objections. There has been an objection. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. There's been an objection to the amendment. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Amendment fails. Vice Speaker, would you like to close on the bill?
I don't even know if this is fitting. Madam Chair, you know, Madam Chair, for me, just looking at the process of this development, Hagatnia master plan, and what we have right before us, we have never been this close to approving a plan for Hagatnia in the past 25 years since the law was enacted back in 1987, and I want to share to my colleagues again that this master plan is a living document that can be changed as Guam changes. And, you know, we can all agree, Madam Chair, that our expectations of what our capital city should be have changed since the Hagatnia restoration and redevelopment authority was established. What has remained, which I believe is the vision for our capital city, to reestablish Hagatnia as the center of Guam's cultural, civic, and economic activity. Hagatnia as the center of Guam's cultural, civic, and economic activity. However, in order for our vision to become a reality, we need a plan that outlines what needs to be accomplished. The master plan before us asks us to seek Hagatnia as a thriving cosmopolitan that balances our cultural preservation and economic growth, building our capital city cohesively harmonious to other developments and harmonious to our history as well as our future, Madam Chair. And by implementing these land use and design guidelines, we are being proactive in protecting our heritage and promoting our culture, not only for our people, but for those who visit our beautiful island of Guam. Hagatnia is for all of us. It's our city. It's our capital, and I want to ask my colleagues to let this plan be that catalyst that will be, bring our people back to where it once, where our manana, my nana, once lived and worked in and even played with. Hagatnia was the place where all our people congregated at. I must say, Madam Chair, that I will take the time right now to thank the board of HRA and the small staff of HRA for their work in facilitating the plan. And I guess I ask my colleagues to support this effort. Senator Massey?
Senator Massey, and I will take the motion to rise.
Motion to...
Report out?
To report out and rise with the recommendation from the body. So on the vote for the motion to rise out of committee... Motion to rise. Madam Chair. A move to accept the recommendation from the committee of the whole, Madam Chair, that we... Madam Chair, let me take a moment to recess so that I can make, state the motion clearly so that my colleagues understand.
We are in recess.
Madam Chair, we are back from recess. Madam Chair, the motion will be moved to, motion to the Bill 246-36, move to rise from the committee of the whole, and place Bill Number 246-36COR into the third reading.
There's been a motion to rise.
Point of information, ma'am. Hi, ma'am.
We are in... We will take a moment to recess. We're back from recess. There is a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and place Bill Number 246-36 as amended and further amended in the committee of the whole on the third reading file. Hearing no objections. Motion passes.
We're back on second reading. Vice Speaker Muna Barnes, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to report from the committee of the whole that Bill 246-36COR has been recommended to come out of committee and... 246-36COR as amended by the Committee on Public Accountability, Hillman Resources, Guam Build Up, Hagatnia Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications and Technology be moved to the third reading voting file.
On the motion to accept the recommendation by the committee of the whole to put the Bill 246-36COR as amended by committee and further amended by committee of the whole?
Yes, ma'am.
Onto the third reading. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion that we recess to 9:00, 9:00 hours in the morning tomorrow, 9:00 a.m.
Is there an objection?
No, just a...
Is there any objection to recessing until 9:00 a.m.? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Recession until 9:00 a.m.